I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of reminders, please silence your cell phones and listening devices are available from Tyler or Carol this morning and meeting documents are down in the end next to Commissioner Karski. We also have a new sign in procedure for folks who will be speaking at the mic and there's a sign in over there. If you'll be speaking today, it'd be great if you could sign in so we have the correct spelling of your name and your address as well. So, thank you. All right, that takes us to routine business. First item, I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Karski.
Personal privilege, if I may?
Yes, sir.
On today's consent agenda, we have a couple of individuals that we're recognizing with basically early promotions. Gail Forster and Matthew Satter are being promoted from appraisers in training to appraisers. They were able to complete their testing for their certifications in what I understand is pretty much record time. They were hired, was it in December?
Yeah, Chris Lilly Equalization, yeah, I've got Gail Forster and Matthew Satter here with me. Yeah, they were hired December 27th and they are allowed a year to progress through five state course exams which are self-paced. At the completion of those five courses which each one is tested and they have to pass those, then they are basically eligible to take the state certification. As I've warned these two, it's not an easy test and both of them finished their five courses, we got their test schedules and proctored, and both of them came out successful on their first attempt, which is, it's not an easy course. So, there is big accolades to be had for these two. It is a big accomplishment and we want to recognize them for that.
You set the bar very high. Congratulations and thank you for getting that done.
Absolutely, thank you very much. You guys are hitting a busy season, so it's good to have you both here on the ground. So, thank you very much. Congratulations. All right, that's a great way to start, so thank you. Next item is consent agenda. I consider a motion to approve the consent agenda unless there's anybody who'd like to remove an item.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, that takes us to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here this morning for public comment? If you could just go one at a time, we've got a five-minute limit per speaker. Thank you.
Good morning. Today I would like to talk to you about the Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline that is proposed to go through Minnehaha County. I am concerned about the safety of this very hazardous pipeline that could put our lives in danger. Since Summit Carbon Solutions has already changed the route several times, many citizens and landowners are unaware that this pipeline could be crossing their land and/or going close to their homes. That's why I'm asking you commissioners to help protect the citizens and landowners of Minnehaha County. Summit Carbon Solutions is coming in under the radar and trying to get their application approved before many have a chance to know what's going on. As a result, citizens and landowners do not have the opportunity to become informed. The clock is ticking since Summit has already filed their application and the 12-month permitting process has begun. If the PUC approves this pipeline, it could affect many citizens and landowners in Minnehaha County. Your opinion and your voice matters. The PUC will listen to you. How can individual citizens or landowners take a stand against these big companies with deep pockets? As county commissioners, the PUC will listen to you over individual landowners or citizens. Twenty counties in Iowa have already submitted their objections and we need your help. Your opinion and your voice do matter. Are you knowledgeable about carbon dioxide pipelines and the dangers of a rupture? If not, please, please take some time and become educated about them. This pipeline is unnecessary. South Dakota has the largest ethanol producer in the nation, poet and chancellor, and they are not part of this project. Ethanol plants can reclaim carbon on-site, eliminating any need for a hazardous pipeline that could put countless lives in danger. Summit Carbon Solutions is a for-profit pipeline company with private investors for private gain. It is not for the public good, which is what Summit wants us to think. Please join together and help us protect our fellow citizens and landowners against this very hazardous and unnecessary pipeline. Your vote matters. Thank you for your time and consideration. And I have a couple handouts for you.
And I didn't want to interrupt you, but I do need your name. I told you to get to sign in, but so we can match the right person.
Yep, I'm Joy Hohn from Hartford.
Thank you, Joy.
I can pass them down.
Thank you very much. All right, the next person, please.
I am Cindy Meyer from Hartford. Excuse me. We have been, myself and other members of my group have been here numerous times talking about the same topic of election integrity. We have been talking about drop boxes. We've spoken in regards to electronic polling equipment, canvassing, voter rolls, quoting statistics and facts. Well, this morning I'm up here because I want to invite you to an event that we are having and I hope that you will find the time in your schedules to join us. I have a handout for you. It's on election integrity, it's restoring the vote in South Dakota. As members of our group, we have, we have found that there are a lot of anomalies in the voting rolls and we are not getting very positive press in regards to this. We are not seeing a lot of support. And so, again, that is the reason for standing up here this morning and inviting you to this event. And one little situation or story that I want to relay to you, we are not saying that there is election fraud. We are saying there is cleanup that needs to be done in regards to the voter rolls. And we have done drive-by canvassing, we've done digital canvassing, and we have started with door-to-door canvassing. And in our first attempt at going out door-to-door canvassing, after two hours of canvassing, we went up to a house that had five or more registered voters at that address and we asked the homeowners if all these people lived there. And the homeowners noticed that the one name that was on the list was a prior owner from 11 years ago. This person is still registered at that address. That person that we were speaking to signed an affidavit that that person no longer lived there and challenged us to find out if in fact that person voted in the 2020 election. And after examining the voter rolls, we found that that person did in fact vote in the 2020 election, registered at an address, a residential address that he lived at 11 years prior. So, we aren't coming across saying that we know that there is voter fraud, but that is really alarming to think that that is the information that we are finding on our voter rolls. So, I again invite you, want to invite you to this event and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, when is that event?
She has flyers, she's handing out.
I will give you a handout and.
I can pass them down for you.
There are different ones here, so. And if, if you don't want the handout, I would ask that you put it somewhere that people can see it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment this morning? All right, seeing none. We'll go ahead and move on to regular business. So, that takes us to item 10, which is to authorize the auditor to begin use of the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. Morning.
Morning, Commissioners, Ben Kite Auditor's Office. Yes, so I guess I'm here today to ask the Commission to authorize the Auditor's Office to begin use of the ARPA funds. Back in January 25th, we briefed you on the final rules that the US Treasury had come out with on the use of ARPA funds. And as, you know, we've had the funds since against June, we've kind of, and we have to spend the, our funds by, well, at least have them appropriated by December 2024 or spent by December 2026. We know that we need to kind of start allocating these funds for eligible uses. My, our request today is really that just allow us, allow the Auditor's Office to start identifying eligible ARPA uses that are currently budgeted expenses that will allow us to start the process. If we receive that permission, we would provide the Commission quarterly reports on updates as to what those funds would be, are allocated against. So, isn't that we're spending money, we're just allocating the money from the ARPA funds against those expenses that we've already incurred. Yes, we note this because we will have upcoming reporting to the US Treasury that will require us to identify the funds that we have spent. And if we haven't spent funds, they'll ask us for our plan to start funding, how to use those funds. So, the action really allows the Auditor's Office to, you know, I guess free up general funds in this, in this sense and gives you the flexibility to come back and, and then at some other time if you wish to allocate funds for not only general fund purposes but to external fund purposes that, that are eligible under the ARPA rules. So, that is, I guess, our request today is to get your permission to start allocating those ARPA funds.
Commissioner Benega.
I don't have any questions. I'd like to make a motion to approve that process as we have planned and discussed before. Or do we need to have a motion on that? I think so.
Yeah, I think we do need a motion. And is that the motion that you're looking for? I'm just trying to, I want to make sure that we give you the right motion.
Right, so we're looking for a motion just to authorize the Auditor's Office to be in use of the ARPA funds.
That was his motion and I'll second it.
So, motion and.
Thanks, Jeff.
Second? And any other questions, discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to item 11, which is a 4-H program overview. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Nathan Skatson with the Extension 4-H Office here. And I'm here this morning to present a bit about our county 4-H program. We've had an interesting couple of years as everyone has, but this last year was a close return to normal for us. We had our achievement days at the Student Empire Fair. We've restarted our in-school and after-school programming efforts. So, just a couple highlights on our year. And I'm sorry, I thought, are we, would you like to talk about the MOU first?
No, I think we're, I think right now we're just getting the overview.
Okay, perfect. I saw it on the board, so I wanted to double check. Anyway, so a couple of the things that I'd like to highlight. We've had a great impact on the county through our volunteer service. We had 3,042 volunteers during our last 4-H year and using a formula given to us by National 4-H that returns the economic impact of about $56,000 on their volunteer hours. We had 147 youth livestock producers go through our Youth Quality Care of Animals curriculum. That's a national curriculum where all livestock showmen and showwomen have to go through this training, so they learn the ethics of raising animals. We talk about the supply chain, we talk about keeping track of giving the animals medicine, keeping proper records and all of that. We also had a lot of non-traditional 4-H, so we consider that to be 4-H outside of a volunteer club setting. That's our schools and after schools. We partner with, I think, I think we are in every school district in the county. And then we also partner with the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, and a couple other smaller after-school offering programs to provide 4-H curriculum to kids there. And when you take all of those numbers, so the kids we reached through our traditional club, volunteer club-led programs and our non-traditional school programs, we reached 21% of the youth in the county this last year, which we see as a pretty good accomplishment. We continue to expand opportunities, we continue to recruit volunteers and equip our volunteers to help teach and lead. Since it is just three of us in the Extension Office, there's only so much we can do. But through our volunteers and through our partnerships, we're able to reach quite a few kids and it's good to be back doing it again. We kind of took a year off with COVID going to schools and after schools, but we're back now. So, any questions about the general 4-H program?
It does not appear so. Thank you. So, then we can move to item 12, which is to authorize the Chair to sign the memorandum of understanding between SDSU Extension and Minnehaha County.
Yep, Nathan Skatson, 4-H Extension Office again. As part of the partnership between South Dakota State University and Minnehaha County to support the Minnehaha County 4-H program, an annual memorandum of understanding is signed between the two counties. The MOU before you today is for 2022. It has been reviewed by the Minnehaha County State Attorney's Office and is presented today for final approval by the Minnehaha County Commissioners.
Any questions on this agreement?
Move for approval, second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, so that takes us to item 13, which is to consider a motion to authorize the creation of the 2022 County Extension Board and approve appointment of its members.
All right, one more item for you this morning from the 4-H side. One of the requirements for every county 4-H program is to have a functioning extension board. This board or committee is intended to help strengthen and expand 4-H opportunities for youth, particularly for those who have not had full access to the program in the past. So, part of the requirement is that the Minnehaha County Commission reviews this extension board roster and approves its appointment. We have one roster spot reserved for the County Commission Liaison and we have two roster spots that are reserved for producers in the county. So, as you can see, we have the following names. We try to include about half that are in the 4-H world, so they're either volunteers, they're parents, they were 4-Hers when they were kids, and half that are in the youth development world but maybe don't have all the knowledge about 4-H because it's always good to have an outside perspective when we're talking about. So, we have members of the outdoor campus, Boys and Girls Club, and then another member of SDSU Extension as members of our board as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for coming this morning.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, that takes us to item 14, which is a presentation on the Juvenile Detention Center, their annual presentation. There's Jamie. Good morning, how are you?
Good, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, Jamie Gravitt, Juvenile Detention Center. I'm going to take a few minutes just to talk to you a little bit about the Detention Center and some of the issues going on that we are facing. The past month, we have received two of our assessments that we have. The first was the JDAI Facility Inspection Team Assessment. It's a self-assessment that people from our community that are experts in some of their fields go and inspect our operations and report back on how things are going. Overall, the inspection is good, we're doing an adequate job, there's many areas for improvement. We also had a pre-assessment that we're waiting on the final report, but what we've been told is, again, we're doing a good job, but we could be doing better. These are both areas that we agree with. We have three major areas that we think would be the most important in fixing most of our needs. The first is our facility. We've, I could go into great detail about that, but we're in the middle of the whole process of examining everything and we're going to be reporting out on that several times in the near future. I can tell you that the data report should be coming shortly. We're having our initial meeting with Bill on Wednesday, tomorrow, Wednesday, on that information about projections for the future. We've also completed the tours for the RFP on architect and engineering firms and then also a construction manager at risk. The groups that are applying for those have both been through the facility and seen the facility, so. One of the most important ones is staffing needs. Over the last couple of years, we've had a huge reduction in part-time staff. Most of that is because of people moving on to full-time jobs. Just recently, we lost one staff, one part-time staff to the jail and one part-time staff that is going to be going to the T Police Department. With our part-time staff, it's usually younger people just out of college or still in college gaining experience to help them become better at a job that they're going to go full-time for. We're having a hard time recruiting them as well, so we used to have about 20 part-time staff, we're down to nine right now. We recently hired two and we're in the process again of interviewing for some more. When I started this job eight years ago, when we would have an opening for a full-time position, we would get around 120 applicants. We currently have two positions open. We received 20 applications for those. We did our first round of interviews and were able to come up with one of the two positions. We're going to have to reopen again to try and find somebody, so. With the shortness in part-time staff, we believe we need some more full-time staff to adequately, we're adequately staffed now, but we think we need to be better with staff so that we're not putting kids down in their cells to do things like police intake calls, admissions, stuff like that. So, we can maintain our eight-to-one ratio, but when things like the intake calls and admissions, we have to put kids down so, because we're pulling someone off the floor to do those admissions and intake calls. So, we will be asking for some staff during the budgeting process this year. And then the final thing is our, our mental health of our youth. More and more youth are coming in with severe mental health problems. We have the emergency mental health process through Southeastern Behavioral Health to address acute needs, but we don't really have much programming for long-term health. And we feel that if we could get QMHP on staff, that would address a lot of areas, it would help us better plan for these kids when they're in our facility, help us identify long-term needs, help us with evaluations and also training our staff to better deal with situations as they come up. We, we hope to use ARPA funding to do a test run on that and see how it goes and collect data for long-term budgeting needs at the end of the ARPA phase. So, those are the three main areas that we think would help us the most.
Commissioner Barth?
Oops. So, just for the benefit of people watching, what does QMHP stand for?
I'm sorry. Qualified Mental Health Professional.
And how is COVID treating your facility?
We've been fairly lucky. We've had staffing issues because of it, but they've been spread out instead of all at once, so we've been able to cover ourselves without being in a major crisis. We've had one outbreak in the youth where we had five youth test positive all at one time, but they were minor cases thankfully. And, but other than that, we've been able to keep it from spreading in our facility.
Thank you.
Commissioner Karski?
So, Jamie, if you know the numbers, let me know, but what's your typical daily census and, and of those, what percent would you say are there with mental health issues?
Last year, we averaged right at 27 youth a day. I would say out of those 27, we usually had, we had about 18 to 19 that would be on some kind of medication for mental health problems.
Holy cow, okay.
Commissioner Benega?
Commissioner Heiburger and I have been on this liaison board for a long time and it's always a surprise to both of us, I think, on the severity of some of the issues that we're beginning to see. COVID certainly has been a part of that, but we're also seeing more kids being charged as adults until they get through the court process, maybe sent to another location at some point, but the staff has done an incredible job dealing with that kind of issue. I also remind everybody that we have, what, 16 counties that are partners along with the Department of Correction. So, we have other individuals and groups that are involved in this whole process and it frankly puts the operation in, I'd say, a difficult position and sometimes based on the transfer of those individuals. And obviously, we've got a building that's over 50 years old and the environment that we are dealing with now is a whole lot different than it was a few years ago. So, it's going to present some challenges, but Jamie has done a great job of leading us through that process and I think we'll have some difficult decisions to make in the future.
I guess, just for a quick informational type thing, mental health is a problem throughout the state. I was able to testify with the summer study group of legislators and senators that we're trying to address the problem of mental health as a whole, both adult and juvenile. You know, they're, they're concerned. I was just informed on Friday that if we get any mental health holds, that we're going to be holding them for a while because HSC won't have beds for two weeks. They currently only have 11 beds for youth total and that's for the whole state. And we're seeing, again, this year, we're seeing more mental health holds, emergency 24-hour mental health holds than we have in the past. So, there's a backlog that's happening with those youth throughout the state and trying to come up with long-term solutions. You know, there's psychiatric residential treatment programs throughout the state, but they're all full and they're, they have waiting lists. So, that's one area that I approached you last summer with proposed legislation to pass through about not holding emergency mental health holds in jail cells and for juveniles. And we, we put a hold on that, we got our, our word out, but I think I'm going to be coming back to you this summer again proposing that legislation and, and maybe not backing off this time.
Commissioner Karski?
Shocking numbers, took me just a minute to digest it, but I mean, you're not running a detention center, you're running a mental health hospital without what you would call qualified mental health professionals. How many of those 18 that you said have maybe some issues are there under some sort of charge? Are they there just because of mental health or are they, they're under some sort of charge?
No, they're, they're under a charge, it's just that they have, also have mental health issues that they're addressing as well.
Underlying mental health issues.
You know, we sometimes. we sometimes joke that we're HSC North, but realistically, these kids have charges as well. Very rarely do we have a kid just on mental health holds for more than twenty-four hours. But it, like I was telling you about this two-week, that it's gonna be two weeks before they can take kids. That's just what I've been told. I haven't heard that from HSC themselves. They're usually pretty good about getting them in, but they're, right now, they're only serving as a crisis stabilization. So, the goal is to get those kids down there, get them stabilized, get them out as quick as they can. There isn't really long-term help for these kids outside of the community if they need it. So, they're, they're trying to rely on community resources, get them stable enough to be in the community, and, and trying to refer them to services within their home community. The, it's not that they're doing a bad job. It's just that they don't have the resources themselves to do it.
Other questions? Commissioner Barth.
Getting psych issues cared for has been an issue for as long as I've been a commissioner, and just today, there are something like fifteen thousand dollars in psych evaluations going on for the public defender, public advocate. It used to be that we had to have them all sent to the state to be evaluated, and people would wait six months in jail before they could go to the state hospital or have a psychiatrist from the state hospital show up and, and give them that evaluation. Six months in jail. And I remember a case where Judge Larry Long sent a seventeen-year-old fellow down there, and they sent him back. They wouldn't take him. They have got a new director every six months down there. They're short of doctors. The state has abdicated their responsibilities and continues to abdicate those responsibilities, leaving it up to the counties to solve the problem. Anyway, it makes me crabby.
I would say that the current director at the Human Services Center has been good to work with. We have an open line of communication when I have concerns or they have concerns, and it's worked out pretty well. One thing I forgot to mention that I'm hopeful for is when Avera opens their new facility in March is the target date. We're hoping that that will lighten some of the load of those twenty-four-hour mental health holds that we have. They feel confident that it'll be helpful. We're, we're just waiting to see, and we're, we're hopeful.
Adam Scher.
Yes, Commissioner Barth.
Just to follow on there, you know, quite a few of the folks that are in jail aren't necessarily mentally ill, but they're brain damaged. Do you have any issue with that?
Occasionally, we do get some lower-functioning individuals into our facility. We currently have a young man that's autistic but very bright, but his social skills are way lower than most. It can be difficult to deal with him. He takes more staff time. Not too long ago, we had a young man with an IQ of fifty-two that was very low-functioning. We, our biggest goal during that time was keeping a structured timeframe for him, because if he got off that timeframe, that's when you'd start having trouble. You know, we have to be careful not to set certainties with him, because if you can't meet those certainties, then it's gonna be a nightmare. And they can become violent as well, because their fight-or-flight doesn't work right, and it usually ends up fight, because they can't flight while they're at JDC.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Certainly have. You and your team do a great job with a really challenging situation that, but we appreciate the fact that you take kids individually and deal with them where they are, and, and we will, I'm sure, be hearing more from you about ways that we can try to help alleviate some of the challenges you're facing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that takes us to item fifteen, which is to authorize the chair to enter into and sign the 2022 JDC Partner Per diem contracts.
Jamie Gravitt, JDC again. Before you is the contracts for our fifteen partner counties. The only one that's unique is Lincoln County. It also has community supervision and evening report center available on their contract. There was a five-point-two percent increase on the contracts this year. That was set based on the CPI from September. We use September because at the time of the writing of the contracts, that was the newest report available. Since then, you all know the reports have been much higher. But, so, I'm not sure what to expect come next year's contract as far as increases, but I'm, I'm assuming they're gonna be similar. No questions were provided by any of the partner counties regarding that increase. They all send them back without any comment or question, so I would ask that you authorize the chair to sign these contracts.
Any questions?
I, I have a comment after we approve this.
I would make a motion to sign the JDC Partner Per diem contracts.
Second.
Motion and a second. You wanna save your comment till after we've approved it?
I'll, I'll comment now. You know, we have partner counties, and what that means is we have others who share the overall expense of, of the facility. They've helped us for many years in the construction and, and continued operation. And without those partners, our costs would be much greater, and so, thank you to them. Some of them have one or two youth a year that come to you, right? And then others might be sending the bus.
That's correct. There's some that don't use a bed for years, and then all of a sudden, they'll get hit with something, and there's a year's worth of beds, you know. It's, it's unpredictable. We used to have some counties that we knew were gonna be our largest counties every year, and there's been a shift in that. They're not using as many beds as they u- used to, and other counties are using more. It, it just ebbs and flows.
Without their partnerships, our costs would be greater to our county taxpayers.
Just an informational addition is that our partner agreement will be coming due in June. We will be renewing that with all our partners. The master overall plan that, where they agree in cost sharings and, and per diems are just part, a small part of that, but we'll be renewing that come June.
Yeah, it's no doubt a great example of collaboration among governmental entities to meet a need, so. Anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item sixteen, which is to consider bid results and award recommendations for MC twenty-two dash zero-one chip seal and crack seal, and authorize the chair to sign an agreement. Good morning, Jacob.
Morning, Commissioners. Jacob Mars at the County Highway Department. We bid the chip and micro jobs this year. This one, this first one is the chip seal project. We have planned seventeen-point-four-seven miles of chip seal, and this would mainly be on the overlay that we completed two years ago. Yep. Aztec is the low bidder. There were three bidders. I, I think we got fairly competitive prices, so I would ask that we award this contract.
Move to approve the contract. Second, Benega.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? All right, roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item seventeen. Consider the bid results and award recommendations for MC twenty-two dash zero-two Microsoft, micro-surfacing and crack seal. Jacob.
Yeah, so, this was the, the second of the two pavement preservation jobs we bid this year. Micro-surfacing, along with some crack sealing prior to that work, about twenty-nine-point-six miles. This is on roads that are in fairly good shape. We do this in two lifts, where we do a scratch course to fill in all the rutting, and then we do a top lift, which is put down with more or less a rubber squeegee on the back of the machine to make it nice and smooth. We had three, three bidders. ASCO out of Sioux Falls. Aztec, who was the low bid on the chip seal, who we've worked with in the past, and then Missouri Petroleum. ASCO is, is new to this work. This will be their first micro-surfacing construction year in the, in the Sioux Falls area. They were also red-low on the city Sioux Falls job, and I know they're gonna do some work in some more rural areas as well, so we're excited to have a new contractor in this area doing this work.
Any questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item eighteen, which is consider a motion for compromise of lien, DPNO forty-eight one oh eight in the amount of three thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents. Melinda Storey, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melinda Storey, Commission Office. The action requested today is to consider a motion to release the petitioner from joint lien, DPNO four-eight one oh eight, with no payment, leaving the entire amount of the lien in the name of the ex-spouse. The couple was married approximately three and a half years from July two thousand five to November two thousand eight. The lien is for poor relief and legal representation for the male member listed on the joint lien. His lien fees were recorded three years before the couple was married and five years after they divorced. The petitioner explains that she's not responsible for any of the lien fees incurred by her ex-spouse. Her plan is to purchase a home in the future and has made multiple payments to satisfy her own separate lien, so she would like to know that she has been released from the responsibility of this lien. She's not able to attend today, but hopes she'll consider her request. Our office did confirm the marriage date, divorce date, and that the fees were incurred by the male member of the joint lien, not the petitioner.
Any questions from Melinda? Commissioner Barth.
They're not buying a new house next Tuesday, are they?
No, she's actually, as I mentioned, she actually is working on paying off her own lien and wants to prepare for a future purchase, yes. But she's found this out while she was asking about the other one and realized, oh, that's not mine.
This is, I think, a reasonable request, and I'll make a motion to approve her request.
I will second that.
Motion and a second. Any other? Commissioner Karski.
Were some of these liens against her, though?
No, none of them. They were all his, yes.
Because some payments had been made. Now, that's what I was curious about. Who was making the payments?
Uh, he was.
He was? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we had a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, that takes us to item nineteen, which is to authorize the auditor to publish requests for proposal for Realtor Services for nine oh eight Northwest Avenue. Tyler, good morning.
Good morning, Tyler Klaat, Commission Office. As it sits now, nine oh eight Northwest Avenue is a property owned by the county that does not have a relationship with a Realtor in place. On February first, twenty twenty-two, the Minnehaha County Building Committee requested that a request for proposals be prepared to solicit those Realtor Services for nine oh eight Northwest Avenue. The RFP has been provided for you. Some key dates to think about. The RFP will be, the responses will be due by March sixteenth of twenty twenty-two. The Building Committee then would meet on April fifth to review those responses with the intent of a contract being brought to the commission on April nineteenth, and then hopefully in place by April twenty-sixth to start Realtor Services. So, the request, again, is for the, to authorize the auditor to publish this RFP.
Make a motion to authorize the request for proposals for Realtor Services?
Second.
Second. Any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item twenty, which is a briefing to discuss the twenty twenty-two legislative updates. Tyler.
Thank you, Tyler Klaat, Commission Office. The briefing before you today is through day twenty-one. Today is day twenty-three of the legislative session. I just wanted to highlight a few bills that have changed since the report was created. House Bill thirteen thirty, which would limit the amount of a property, limit the increase of assessed property value. This was scheduled for hearing this morning. Their committee did some gymnastics with the schedule, so I'm assuming it was heard. There was a friendly amendment provided by the sponsor that would completely change the intent of the bill. Essentially, what it would do is create an interim summer study to address property taxes in the process through which they are assessed and charged to the public. So, hopefully that, we'll see what that, what that discussion looked like. Senate Bill two twelve, which addresses the concealed carry permits, was deferred until tomorrow, the sixteenth. House Bill ten fifty-three, which addresses bond payments and the use of bonds for jails and those sorts of facilities, was passed. Some significant changes to that. It went from a one percent receipt, gross receipts tax, to a half of a percent. The bond can only be used if it's approved by sixty percent of the voters in that bond election, and it can only be used if the county has not used that process in the preceding five years. Senate Bill ninety, which was a, a way to require the counties to get some housing impact studies done when they want to adopt the twenty eighteen International Building Code was changed as well, pretty significantly. It now requires, or offers a, no longer requires the housing report. No longer would require the public hearing to be adopted, and allows for the twenty twenty-one International Building Code and International Residential Code to be used. House Bill twelve oh three, this one was a little new for me. It would, it received a do-not-pass recommendation out of committee, and it was, the House of Representatives yesterday failed to calendar the item. I'm not entirely sure procedurally what happens with it next, but I believe it's more or less dead. Senate Bill one twenty-four, which would have required the auditor to provide a report of voter registration annually to the Secretary of State. That was sent to the forty-first day. And House Bill twelve fifty-seven, which I have failed to bring up to you really in the past, but it's been in the report, would create a capital improvement fund for each county. This would be funded by a formula, formula using population, road miles, and deck area, which is bridge area, as variables for determining the allocation that each county would get in their fund. Those funds could be used for road improvements, courthouses, office buildings, jails, county exhibition buildings, four-H and extension buildings, grandstands, bleachers, and highway maintenance buildings. The fiscal note that was requested estimated around five-point-eight million for Minnehaha County. That would be received during fiscal year twenty twenty-three, the, the state's fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-three.
If I could.
Kind of a lot, but that's my summary there.
That, that's the one where the county gets like one-quarter of a percent of the sales tax revenue, correct?
I believe so, yes. Yeah, yep. So, it would, it would be a net decrease to the general fund, but that would be then spread out to the counties.
And to clarify, it's not one-quarter, but one-quarter of one percent of the sales tax revenue.
Correct.
It's not that one? I spent, if I.
Go ahead, Commissioner Karski.
Kind of blend my liaison report with Tyler's report. I spent considerable amount of time on the phone yesterday. Tyler was one of the many calls, or maybe a couple of them, and legislators and lobbyists and all part of the state-county commission work, but visiting about thirteen thirty and twelve ninety-one and other alphabets, numbers, and whatever. But it's interesting, and I have to thank our legislators. Talked to, like I said, several of them, and their willingness to call me back and to have a conversation about the concerns that that county has, so we're working it.
Oh, so to clarify, twelve fifty-seven is Representative Dennard's bill. I think what you might be referring to, ten fifty-three, is Oden's bill. I don't know if that's the, if that is the confusion or not, but.
Okay, yeah.
But for what it's worth, property taxes have been a huge topic this session. There's around twenty bills, I think, that deal with it in some form or fashion, so. It is what it is, I suppose.
Any other questions or comments? I just said, this session is always interesting.
I would say I'd have a comment about the issue of freezing assessments for dwellings for disabled and senior citizens. That's my normal job. I've had tons of calls and emails about people who literally, frankly, were qualified before and then with adjustments to property tax values to go from, well, currently, maybe just over a hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand that don't qualify any longer, and then they got a six percent raise in their social security. So, the social security increase revenue for them is six dollars a month or something like that, and their property taxes have gone up dramatically because of the change that potentially is gonna affect them for quite a while. So, I hope that the legislature takes this serious. It sounds like they're gonna do a summer study, which I'm not totally enthused about, but I don't wanna let this thing go away either.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Barth.
Question for Commissioner Benega. So, it's based on their property valuation getting out of control?
Property valuations is maybe their income, but frankly, that's usually. Property valuations is maybe their income, but frankly, that's usually not an issue. Income is well below the step that they're currently in, and if their income on an annual basis is primarily Social Security, which I think went up five-point-eight percent or something like that, but their property tax increases went up more than the six percent by a long shot. In fact, I think the average home sale in the county right now is just over three hundred thousand dollars. So, literally, there's a challenge to go to something that's closer to market than it is to what it is currently. Everybody's just a hair different, but it all affects everybody's property taxes significantly if they no longer qualify for the elderly tax raise.
Any other comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to Commission Liaison Reports. Are there any Commission Liaison Reports? Commissioner Karski's already given at least part of his. Anybody else? Okay. Any non-action Commission discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I've been contacted by a couple of people on the CO2 pipeline issue, and I think we should ourselves consider it publicly at some point going forward. And I don't mind the idea of us writing a letter to the PUC regarding it. You know, the, the gas itself is used to put down animals at Smithfield and stuff, and, you know, so clearly it is hazardous. And it is a private project, not a public one. It's not like the Canadians are building it to supply gas, gasoline to Japan or something. I think that it's in our interest to stand up for our citizens in Minnehaha County and try to make the best deal we can for them.
Thank you. Any, but, any other non-commission, non-action Commission discussion? All right, if not, I'd entertain a motion to recess for the next.
Let's go to recess.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will adjourn until about ten o'clock. Thank you.